I am going to call this meeting, this special meeting of the Regional School District 12 Board of Education to order. It is six thirty and at this point, we're going to check to see if we have. Our forum, I don't see Julie here. I thought I saw her outside. All right. Well, I'm just going to call it then. Joe. John, I don't see John. I'm here. Stephanie, I don't see Stephanie. Angela, Alex, Justin, Jennifer, Jane. Is Jane with us online? Okay, there's Jane. I see her waving. Julie, I believe is outside. She hasn't come in yet. Pete and Mary. We have a forum. I'm going to turn this over now to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mark Gosselin, to take us through his proposed budget for 2023, 2024.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just maybe Jane's at your home. If you can give me a thumbs up if you can hear me.
You're a little bit faint.
Sound check. All right. We are going to, I'm gonna share my screen here. Just give me a second. Let me pull that up. All right, Mr. Allen, are we all set? I shared my screen. Straight in. All right. All right. So thank you again for coming out tonight for this special meeting where we're going to have the opportunity to take a look at the 2023, 2024 proposed budget.
By thirteen and then two.
So. As some of you know, my wife is a reading specialist, which means that for us at home, books are really important. And so I think a budget is kind of the same way that the story of the budget is a crucial story to tell and that every budget has a story. So tonight I'm going to share the story of our budget. And before I jump into this, I just want to acknowledge publicly the work that our Director of Finance, Nicole Grant, has put into the project as well. We certainly put a lot of time and effort and hopefully a few laughs into this over the last few weeks. But I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Nicole upfront. So thank you, Nicole. So a budget is more than just a series of numbers on a page. It's an embodiment of our values. And we're gonna start with a brief overview of school finance. I think about this in the fact that we are certainly presenting to the board tonight, but also to viewers at home. And so I want to give a quick overview of kind of how school financing works and how the school budgeting process works. Just so that there's a more broad understanding, there's no mystery. So where does the money come from in public schools? Well, if we were to zoom out and look at public schools from a K-12 perspective, all across the country, our state revenue or educational revenues come from three major sources. The federal government, state government, and local government. And the balance of state and local funding for schools will vary place to place. But if you were to zoom out the entire country, you'll see that it breaks down roughly along these dimensions. Interesting what you'll notice is that the federal government only provides about 7.7% of the educational revenue nationwide to schools, yet they are responsible for almost all of the mandates and policies that schools are saddled with. So for the smallest funding source, they have an outsized voice in the things that we have to do in schools. And that's one of the things that causes some headaches and frustration for schools across the country as we try to navigate that. So Connecticut kind of maps on similarly to what we saw in the last slide, except that our state chooses to shift most of the burden to the local taxpayers. So generally across Connecticut, most of our school funding comes from our local taxes. That's about 58% of the pie. We get about 37% from the state and then roughly five from the federal government. So then, once that money goes to Hartford, they decide how to distribute that money back to to the towns in the form of school funding that they saw on the previous slide, that 37%. So the way that they do that is through what they call the ECS formula, the Educational Cost Sharing Formula. And the goal of that is to try to level the playing field to the best ability that the state can do as they distribute monies back to local or regional school districts. So why do we use this formula? It's a result of a court case here in the state of Connecticut called Horton versus Meskell, which really said that the line strictly on property wealth was inherently unequal. And so the federal government, sorry, the Supreme Court here in Connecticut handed down this ruling and part of that ruling was that the state had to establish a fair funding formula to give monies back to the towns. We've made some gains in that regard, but we're certainly not there. And you'll see that throughout some of this presentation today. So basically, how does the money flow? Well, the money comes from the state capital. They give that ECS grant out to the towns and the towns send that money off to their school districts in the form of local funding and then ECS pass through. We're in a unique situation because we're not a municipal district. So our money goes from Hartford to the three towns. And then we give them a credit for that local funding when we send them the tax bill. So the money's still there, but it just gets distributed slightly differently in our context. So how they decide this ECS formula is through a series of needs that informs the weighting. And so they give priority to the low income number of students you have in the district, the concentrated poverty of the district, and the number of English language learners. So these three major weights are things that don't really pertain to us in any meaningful way in our three towns. So as the state looks at things. So the base A ratio that you get is comprised of two factors. 70% of it comes from the property wealth factor of the community. 30% comes from the income wealth factor of the communities. And taking those together is how they determine the A ratio that each town gets from Hartford. Here in Region 12, our three towns rank highly in both property wealth and in income wealth. So if these are the two drivers, it's not going to give us very favorable amount of money coming back to us from Hartford. So Region 12 ranks highly in both property and income wealth. You can see our town ratings here. In terms of the equalized brand list, that tells us the property wealth of the community and per capita income. We can see that we rank among some of the highest of the 169 municipalities in Connecticut. One of the things that we're fortunate is that we have an agriculture program. So while we don't necessarily get the same money from ECS funding that other towns might see, the agriculture program does help to offset that a little bit. And this model here shows how the money flows through the ag program. It's relatively similar, other than the fact that that ag money goes out to the host districts and then we charge them the tuition rate as part of their agreement to send students to us through the ag program. So we talked a little bit about school district finance. And now we're just gonna delve quickly into how school district budgeting works. This is one of the areas where I found there is some misconceptions often that people share in communities, especially when they think there's a lot of pork, a lot of fat in school budgets. But when you go through the process and you learn how it really works, they come away saying, wow, I had no idea what this really looks like. And so I'm gonna take a little bit of a tour through that. So what is a school budget? Simply it's a spending plan for a school district. And like all budgets, our school budgets are a ledger and they have two sides, revenues and expenses. So we create the spending plan and we match our expenses against the expected revenues that we'll get. And that's the money that we saw from the state and federal government. And that should give us a balanced budget. Unfortunately, it doesn't in Connecticut. So we fill that hole with a local levy from the towns that make up our school districts. So our expenses minus our revenues create that budget gap. And again, that's what we go out to for referendum in Connecticut to fill that gap. As you said, it comes to referendum. And in our context, that referendum then is split based on how much the towns will owe, based on the overall proportion of students that they represent. So as of our October 1st count, and that's the count that they use, the federal government to establish your district enrollment every year, Roxbury had 140 students, which makes up just under 24% of our budget. Roxbury had 120 students, which makes up about 29% of the overall budget. And then Washington has 282 students, which makes up about 48% of the budget. Connecticut has a state law that requires, it's called the MBR, Minimum Budget Requirement. And simply put, that means that states can, or sorry, local districts cannot charge less than they did last year for their state, sorry, for their local funding for their school districts. So there's some exceptions to that requirement. If you have a large decrease in your ECS aid from the state, or if you have a significant decline in enrollment. But barring that, you can't budget less money year over year. And the idea there is that we want to make sure that providing consistent and predictable education outcomes for our students. Our budgets are divided into what we call function and objects. And so that's the way that we code the budget. And I'll show you how that kind of works on the next slide. So there's a uniform chart of accounts that separates all of our lines into these numbers. You might see these on the line item budget and have wondered like, what are all these numbers? That describes our functions and objects in addition to funds, locations, and other codes that help to identify where those monies are being spent. So really, there's no money hidden in budgets. Every single dollar has a purpose in our budget. And they do it in all budgets and we're audited every year to make sure that we're accounting for that appropriately and that we're spending the funds. And then anything that's left over, we do give back to the funding towns. So here's an example from our own budget. Here's an account code. And this might not really mean a whole lot to you, but when you break it down, you can see that that 200 number there is the object that's benefits. This particular line item is for health insurance. The function is the fiscal service is part of the budget. And then that's our regular education would be the code. So that's health insurance benefits for our regular teachers. So here's probably one of the slides that causes people the most interest when we go through a school budget. And that's how is the cost actually broken down when we look at our expenses? So in our school budget, like most school budgets, salaries and benefits make up 75 and a half percent, roughly 76% of the overall budget. Then when you add on to that our contractual obligations and fixed costs, and after all of that is totaled up, that leaves us with 2.6% of the budget to play with for programs and the things that we really want to do in schools, right? And so I think there's this misconception oftentimes that there's a lot of discretion that we have in the way that we fund schools and what we do with our money. But in reality, that accounts for less than 3% of the overall budget. So you see these big buckets right here and we'll just explain them really quickly. So what's included in contractual obligations? Our contractual obligations are all of these things, debt service, transportation costs, tuition that we have to pay, different insurances and fees, the contract for our medical director, our software licenses. So these are the things that are contractual obligations, but again, are unmovable fixed costs that we have to make sure that we're paying down year over year. We also have a column called fixed costs. And in those fixed costs are things like the inspections for our fire protection services, the utilities that we pay. So that's our well maintenance, our sewer bills, water. So we don't have water. We have our own wells, but sewer, electricity, oil, telephone bills, gas and diesel for our district vehicles, as well as the annual maintenance of those vehicles, changing the oil and rotating the tires. So altogether, some of the things that we don't have a lot of control over, the salaries, contractual obligations, and fixed costs altogether make up 97, almost 97 and a half percent of our budget. And if we were to look at the expenses by category, they break down in these ways. So again, the bulk of our spending goes to salaries and benefits. And then you can see that the rest of that basically goes to dues and fees, supplies, purchase services, and other services that we pay for out of the expense side of our budget. And so for this year's budget, I did a comparison, looking at our expenses by category, salaries, benefits, professional and technical services, property services, other services, supplies, program changes, and our dues and fees year over year. And that would lead us to a increase of 5.81% in terms of actual costs out the door. So we said we have about 3% left in what we call our discretionary program or non-fixed costs. And so what does that go to? Well, that goes to all of the stuff that happens in classrooms. So that's our educational programs at our schools and all the monies that flows to our athletic departments and to supplies in all of those areas. So that's textbooks, that's our technology supplies, guidance, supplies they need for their work over there, professional development activities, even our custodial supplies, all lives in that 3% of the budget. So. One of the things that I think is important is that we spend a little bit of time exploring our journey to today. So our story began back in October when Nicole began the process by sending out materials and instructions to all of our schools and departments, telling them that it's time to start thinking about the budget and putting in requests for the things that you would like to see in your schools or your departments. And those schools and departments were asked to evaluate and make requisitions based on their needs. At that time, the district also created a budget development timeline, beginning with that October timeframe and stepping out the process all the way through the budget vote on May 2. So when we began the journey and we looked at all of the requests that came in, we had a increased cost to the district from last year of 11.2%. That was the amount after we applied the anticipated agriculture science revenue. So we began with knowing that we needed to spend about 11% more than last year if we're gonna fulfill all of the wishes that came in. So before we get into kind of where we're going from here, let's talk a little bit about the setting of the story. All stories have a setting and context really matters. And so we'll take a look at some of the elements that are created in the context of the budget that we're looking at this year. So first and foremost, we're in the midst of a 20-year high in terms of inflation. And that inflation is usually expressed as the CPI or the Consumer Price Index. And if you look at inflation just over three years, we went from a inflationary period back in January of 2021, we're at 1.4% to an inflationary period in January, the following year, of 7.5%. And then it's down slightly now to 6.4%. So we've been on this inflationary roller coaster over just the last three years, which is well outside of the norm, which is somewhere around the neighborhood of 3% year over year. If you look at the CPI of the last 20 years, you could see that pattern. There's some ups and some downs, right? We had a big dip here, if you remember that, time in the kind of 2008, 2009 period. Finally, hitting a high point in June of 2022 at 9.1%. Like I said, we've come down a little bit since then. But our school district, like everyone else, is not immune to the radical run-up in costs that we've seen. So if you've been to the store, you've seen this yourself. In 2021, eggs were $1.47 a dozen. Eggs today are $5.49 a dozen. I was at the store yesterday and checked that price. Something like Crayola washboard markers for 12-pack. 2021, they were $2.49. Now it's $9 for that same pack of markers. So that's an increase of 264%. Copy paper, one of the things that we use quite heavily in schools. 2021, it was at $23 for a box. Now we're at $37 a box. And that's on the state contract. If they buy on state contract, that'd be closer to $60 a box. Simple things, these plastic folders right here. Plastic pocket folders. They went from being 25 cents a piece to $1.50 a piece. Again, not talking about a lot of money per unit, but the increase is pretty big. And when you magnify that across purchasing, we do it at the school level, that's pretty significant. So that's a 500%. We've been to the pumps, you know, the fuel has gone up. It's starting to trend back down a little bit, but still, year over year, from 2021 to 2023, fuel is up 11.64% per gallon for regular gas. And then electricity is up 110% with a change from 11.5 cents per kilowatt back in 2021 to 24 and a half, 22.24, excuse me, cents per kilowatt in 2023. So these things create some headwinds for our budget. These are some things that are creating a drag on the budget as we head into budget season. First and foremost, that unprecedented inflation. The second drag on the budget is that we have new contracts that hit in the budget this year for the first time. So we have budgets for our administrative union and, sorry, for our yeah, administrative union and for our education union, our teachers' union, both coming in hitting the budget this year. And so those new costs do hurt the person that hit you. Luckily for us, our contracts are all front-loaded, so we'll see some relief in the future. Fuel costs are up, as we saw in the previous slides. Insurance costs are up as well. This is also the first year of debt service. And so we have $2.5 million in improvements that were done to the building that we're standing in right now, Chapaud Valley School. And so now it's time to start paying that debt service back. So that's another headwind that we're finding this year in the budget. The last headwind that we're looking at is that last year, the budget increase was only 2.03. And that was done in an environment of about 8% inflation. So that 2.03 didn't fully cover the increases alone in our salaries last year. And so that represents a actual loss of revenue as you think about the difference between that 2.03 and living somewhere in that 8% inflationary environment. So some additional context. We're coming in at a budget, right? This year, looking at an increase of 4.6% overall year over year, and we'll talk about how we got there. But that would rank us 29 out of the 67 towns that we know so far have submitted budget figures. So we're right about the middle of the pack. The average increase across Connecticut of those 67 towns that we know of right now, it's 5.3% or coming in under that. And the range of tax increases that we know of range from 2.62 all the way up to 14.57. So how do we get here? So. We started at that 11 and change, right? And then we cut down to 8.07. This was the budget increase that we shared with our FNO committee at the end of January when we reviewed the department budgets after we factored in our revenue from agriculture. We knew that we wanted to get down from 8.07. But in order to do that, we wanted to be clear as to what our approach is going to be. So we stepped back and set some goals. So we set three large goals. One was to maintain our academic program. Our second goal was to invest in our innovations to enrich our academic outcomes. And then our third goal was to deliver a budget that provides maximum value to taxpayers. So we wanted to keep what we had, want to grow it and make sure that we're continuing to improve it, but also not break the bank. Those are our three big goals. So in that first goal, what do we mean by maintaining the excellent educational program? Well, we wanted to continue to offer the same classes and experiences in this year that we did in previous years. We wanted to avoid staff cuts and we wanted to supply the necessary textbooks, supplies, and technology that will support learning. So when you're looking at reducing a budget and you're only really playing in that 3% of the overall cost, not easy to do, right? The easy place to make up money is reducing staff. But that was something that we knew we didn't want to do. Our second goal was to invest in innovations to enrich our academic outcomes. So we want to add a world language program to elementary. That's something that we've heard loud and clear from our families at all three of our elementary buildings. We're looking to restructure Burnham School and an age-related model. Right now, Burnham is a multi-age classrooms. And Burnham, parents have reached out and asked if we could move away from that model as class sizes have begun to grow in our forecast that we need to do so. We figured that this is probably a good time to take a look at that. And then when we layer in the academic outcomes that are expected of our students today with the common core standards, we feel that this is probably the time to take a look, a closer look at that model and whether it's still working. It certainly worked when we needed to move that direction, but we think that now we're in a different period. Burnham is the same size roughly as Booth School. And so we figured that we should offer a similar academic program as well, so that we can lead our students. We're looking to add a science and a special education teacher here at Chapaud. Elementary school, we're looking to add an innovation program at all three of the schools that will help our students engage in outside-of-the-box thinking in design and engineering and continue teacher learning coaching initiatives through University of Pittsburgh's IFL Institute for Learning. And our last goal was to deliver a budget that provides value to the taxpayers. So we don't just say, yep, everything that you ask for, you get. We ask our folks to justify all expenditures. We push back and make sure that all these things are truly needed and it is not a creative way to do the same job with either different resources or less resources. So we went back and made sure that we justified all the expenditures that were filtered up to us. We're looking to investigate self-insurance as a way to reduce costs as we move forward. We've recently voted to go ahead and pursue a solar project. And the installation of solar arrays will also help to reduce costs long-term. We're continuing to research and take advantage of the best fuel purchasing options. Sometimes that's buying through a cooperative group like we did this year. Other times, that might not be. But Nicole keeps a close watch on that. And we're being very aggressive in striking when we get the best deal. And then also continuing to apply for grants to help offset costs. And an example of that would be the recent announcement of the mental health grant through Advance. We're also focusing on our procurement, making sure that we're getting the best prices for goods and services. Nicole does an amazing job day to day, making sure that she is out there negotiating the best prices for us. So if we get a request, we don't just say, oh, sure, we'll go on school specialty and order that, or we'll go on Amazon and make a purchase. We're shopping around and making sure we get the best prices, which sounds simple, but it's a time-consuming effort when you're a big school district. But it also does yield quite a bit of savings. So it's definitely something that's worth the effort. We're also investigating the creation of an educational foundation. An educational foundation is kind of like the public school equivalent of a private school endowment. And so it's a fund that would allow us to fund projects in the school to help enrich our academic program, but that will come outside of the operating budget. So we raise money for that educational fund and then we'll be able to give micro grants back to schools and classrooms to fund the programs in a way that would not hit us the operating budget. We also continue to incentivize staff and student attendance, which is crucially important because it helps us to reduce our substitute teacher and student intervention costs. So our strategy to get down to that 4.67 is the following. So we started at that 8.14 and we moved down to 4.73. And that was our first kind of large budgetary movement. Luckily, we got even lower than the 4.73. But at that time, we made a couple of key strategic moves. So we moved expenses out of facilities into our capital reserve accounts, be able to lock in fuel costs at lower than projected rates. I went through and made some adjustments to the staffing requests that were submitted to us. We reduced one bus run by combining routes. We moved some of the math curriculum purchases over to our Title I grant. And we went through the budget line by line and made some micro adjustments throughout the entire budget. And after all of that, we were able to reduce the budget year over year from 8.14 to 4.73. We wanted to make sure that we're still investing in our schools. So when we moved that money into capital improvements, we want to make sure that we're using those reserve funds to continue to invest in our schools. So our elementary buildings, we added card readers. We will add card readers to all schools. Washington Primary School, we will relocate the exit light in our stairwell, add ACs to the space here in the library, add safety rails to the garden, add electrical outlets to the basement area and fund, add funds to the outdoor court service, surface area at Washington Primary School. And that's a cost share with the town of Washington. Chapaud Valley School, replace the sewer ejector pump and water pressure vessels, install heat coil in the boys locker room, add a camera in the middle school hallway, replace the grease trap in the kitchen and the pool shower cartridges, and a new carpet sweeper. And then over at Burnham School, we want to install the remaining smoke And then over at Burnham School, we want to install the remaining smokeheads that need to be installed. Um make some repairs to the flat roof that's there, and over at Booth, replace the well pump and supply lines. Additionally, um we want to make sure that we're setting out to bid some remaining work that we're looking at for this year. Uh power washing and painting of the sopets and fascia at Washington Primary. Uh painting the gin canopy and the farting wall, as well as the lockers, hallways, stairwells, and some classrooms. At Booth, uh painting the wooden exterior surfaces, um and some doorwork here at Shapog. Um replacing the middle school hallway door with a new door set and added reader. Um replacing the doors over at the high school hallway south door and um looking to. Invest a little bit of money in these front doors, um so we add, we call a man trap, which is a security enhancement. That um kind of locks folks in a vestibule at the beginning uh until they're led into the building. Um also adding center mullions, that's the um kind of metal uh rod in the middle of the door that. The deadlock would um engage to um increase the uh structure, steel, strength and structure of the doors. And also bring panic hardware to various doors around the school. Uh in our agri science program, we are looking to enroll forty four freshmen. Um that would bring the total enrollment up to one hundred and sixty seven students. Projected revenue that we're looking at is one million, six hundred fifty nine, eight hundred sixty eight dollars. Uh and we credit that at ninety percent, just in case we have attrition rates. Um the projected expenses are one million, six hundred eighty five, six eighty two. Um and so this was the year that we're supposed to break even, and we do, although it's not as easy to see in this slide because. Uh we do have a debt service of eighty four thousand um that we'll be paying this year. It's a temporary uh debt service until we get the reimbursement back from. So to review. We started at eleven point two. That was our initial increase. We were able to get that down to eight point oh seven. And um ultimately, um over the weekend, Nicole and I were doing final adjustments, we were able to get the budget down to four point six seven. So that's the suggested increase from the superintendent um to the school board for the upcoming school year that we raised the budget four point six seven percent um over last year. Uh what that means for the towns is um a cost share, as we laid out in the earlier slides, the. All the towns will see a an increase, a large increase is going to be at Bridgewater, um and that's largely due to the change in enrollment patterns um that we're seeing at Bridgewater. Um so they'll be asked to contribute uh six hundred sixty six thousand, one sixteen. Roxbury will be asked to contribute sixty eight thousand, six twenty one, and Washington, three hundred sixty nine thousand, six six six. Again, the program enhancements that we're looking to add under this new budget is um a new elementary teacher at Burnham. Um and that's helping to uh help phase out the multi-age classrooms. New elementary uh Spanish teacher for that world language program. An additional science teacher at Shapog, an additional special education teacher um for the agri science students. Um a half a FTE for the agri science secretary, a half FTE for a network manager assistant. And investing in those elementary innovation programs. In addition, we're also looking to um start an esports club, um and that will pay for licenses and equipment. Um upgrade our TV studio um in our video cameras so that we can enhance our uh broadcasting program here. Um it it would help fund the astronomy club's school license. Uh National Wellness Society for Science stipend in materials and um start a timber team um for the agri science program. So overall, I believe that this returns, um and this is an outstanding return on on the investment. So at that four point six seven, we're able to still deliver a budget with a lower increase than many districts across the state. While still maintaining our programs, while still introducing new and impactful changes that will improve our program. And also by being responsible in both meeting our financial obligations and preserving the fiscal health of the region. This is a kind of a roadmap. It's a little hard to see on this screen, uh but it walks us from where we are today at March sixth. We're doing the budget presentation, um and then we do the Childland Roadshow to the different boards of finance. Uh we go to Roxbury, we go to Bridgewater, we sort of bend to Washington. Um we have our budget hearing. Um our annual district meeting and um a special meeting where the board will vote whether or not to approve the budget. And then if all goes well, uh then we go to a referendum in towns on May second. So we're asking the community, we're asking the school board tonight uh to help us write the next chapter here in Region Four.
Alright, so I think we're gonna need to digest this uh and spend some time on this stuff. Um Julie, you have a question?
Yeah. Mark, how many teachers will be at Burnham next year? You said plus one, but obviously, if we go back to sixth grades, that would leave us with. Got it. Thank you.
Good.
So I don't remember which slide it was, but it was with the percentage and the students for each town in the beginning. I think maybe the uh Roxbury number might be wrong. Um I just want to make, maybe I'm wrong, but I think it said that Roxbury was one twenty four. And that Bridgewater was one forty, but the percentages.
I think they were just inverted by mistake.
I know, but I just want to make sure that if it's corrected before the PowerPoint goes out. That's all. Yes, that one. Yeah. So just, you might wanna. Yeah, that's all.
Alright, good, good point. Okay. Is there anything else now? I'd really like to to spend some time with the gestating, we'll talk about.
Um I I have a question. Is is the four point six seven percent? Be before we have the, we take um the amounts for the tuition and students and for agri science students?
So no, that's the number after we take in the tuition in and the act revenue.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um we will uh declare the uh special meeting of the Board of Education adjourned by consent at seven oh seven eight. Eight minutes past seven. And we will, I'll call to order the regular regional board, uh school board, District Twelve Board of Education meeting. Um and uh why don't um Julie, why don't you follow the list to make sure? I think we have more people here now.
Joe?
Here.
John Bonito?
Here.
Not here, Greg?
Here.
Stephanie? Angela? Alex? Justin? Jen? Jane?
Here.
Myself, Pete. And Mary.
Hey Julie, can you hear me?
Oh, there's John, John's there too. Okay. Alright, uh so we have everyone, um one for another. Is there any public comments on agenda items? I hear nothing, so we'll move on. Uh consent agenda, there's a set of minutes of the special, uh the Board of Education Special Meeting of January third. Does anyone want to take those off of the consent? Hearing no one, those will be adopted. Um now we have the F A, FFA Officers update.
Um I'm Elliot Noonan. I'm the president of the Shapog FFA Chapter. I'm Nina Kierleben, and I'm the treasurer. So without our FFA, it's February. Monday, we went bowling. Tuesday night, we had movie night here at school, and we watched Mrs. Southfire. Wednesday morning, we had our faculty appreciation breakfast. Uh Thursday, we went to read screenplay in Danbury. On Friday, we had. The district dance at Northwestern High School. Um and actually, very soon, we're expecting our barn to expand. We have currently five animals who are expecting babies within as soon as a few days or a couple of weeks. Um our cow, Peppermint Patty, is supposed to have a baby within the next two to three days. Um two of our goats, Cheerio and Blue, are pregnant and are due about six weeks. They were live, covered, bred, so is Peppermint Patty. And Thunder and Lightning, two of our um sheep came to us already bred, and they're expected also a couple of weeks. Um we have Futures Leader, Futures Leaders Conference on March twenty second. Then we have our district public speaking contest that will go on March thirtieth. Um we are hosting a Shapog P service for the whole district. It's going to be a little attention project. Um we have a lot of CDEs going to competition at UConn on the twelfth.
You guys are gonna be pissed.
Yes.
I want to say you've done a tremendous job, issue. Uh what what we've seen, especially the the holiday. Sample decorations, they're absolutely wonderful. And uh the competitions you've gone to and the work you've done, I had the privilege of uh judging one of your contests and absolutely back to this job. So thank you very much for everything you've you've done for Shapog. So.
Assuming it happens during the school day, the hope is yes, we're able to. If it happens during our ad class, it's preferable. Um definitely. Um but yeah, if it's during the school day, hopefully, we'll be able to go be a part of it, watch it.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. Sure.
So just, I I had a couple more things on here that I wanted to bring to your attention, and I see that all of you guys got the syrup. If I if I missed anybody, let me know. Uh yours is half empty, Greg. What's what's going on there? Uh I have some more, though. Yeah, please enjoy. Yeah, the kids have been making that all week. Uh we still are bottling some more right now. But uh this should be the last week for for sap collection, but um the Sugar Shack is a. Don's been working with me a little bit to get the Sugar Shack process started. But this was all boiled in the in the food science lab, actually, so not the Sugar Shack, but um it was still a good experience for our kids. And in addition to that, we've done a couple other things with our facilities. We've uh ac- actually outfitted the agri science truck as a student activity vehicle, which. Might not seem like a lot, but that's pretty big for us. We got it outfitted with the, similar to a bus, so now we're legally able to drive kids in it pending a plate. We got a brand new livestock trailer, so we can now transport Peppermint Patty and her offspring um to whatever public events that we want. Um I'm sure, I hope that you guys saw the article recently in the Milford Spectrum about the Food Bank produce donations. That was, that was good for us. Uh the kids mentioned FFA Week. Uh we just, it along with the help of the Alumni Parent Group, created four scholarships for the kids today. Uh advertise them today, two for official dress for the kids and two for um national convention trip. For next year, paid for by the Alumni Parent Support Group for next year. I think I'm, I might have mentioned this at the December update, but we we've got a Woodmizer Sawmill coming for a. Little over a year out, but we're on the books to receive this equipment for wood processing in our natural resources course next year. Um and we are actively sending, well, I've sent the exceptions and waitlist letters out too at this point, so that's kind of what's been going on. Um and you can see we have extremely busy spring coming up, so.
Well, we absolutely hope that you will come back, especially after the trip to nationals, that could take us into what happened there. We'd love your experience.
Absolutely. We'll do for sure. Excited. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Um I know that you, we got the numbers at some point, but if you could just remind us of how many applications you received. And just compare just uh from this year, from from this year, from last year.
We we have eighty five applications this year and eighty two last year, so a little bit, little bit more than last year, but the most in four years this year.
The most of four. And then for the freshmen, how many applications?
Uh well, that would be the eighty.
That will all.
Yep, eighty five total.
Total.
Um the girls mentioned something about the um food pantry. That's the project coming up in the. Um every chapter is expected to host a um new service event for the district. So we've decided that this year, we're going to do the pantry project. So one day, it will. We're gonna have the other districts come here um at the school. We're gonna build like these little boxes so people can donate from the towns around us. Just food like can be, and then we can donate that to. Might also ask, is there more of like a long-term partnership with the Milford Food Pantry, or was that like a one-time thing because you had excess harvest that time?
No, uh yeah, so we are hoping to partner with them long term. We actually made another donation to the Roxbury Food Pantry after that, so we want to hit all our towns. Um New Milford uh was really able to host us fast, and they were extremely fired up about the donation, so we. Were welcomed back with open arms. They were, they couldn't believe the quality of the produce and the amount of produce that we gave them, so uh we actually. Yeah, yeah, thanks. We actually were ready to do another one now, so we're just kind of choosing uh where it's gonna go, but yeah, definitely. As many as we can do, for sure. Yeah.
That was your first harvest from the Aquaponic.
That was actually our second. Uh yeah, the first one went uh to Woodbury Food Pantry. And then this one went to New Milford. We did one from Rock to Roxbury. And then uh this next one, I don't know exactly where it's gonna go yet, but we have another pretty sizable harvest here coming.
Roxbury will take as much.
Yeah.
I might just recommend that it would be also really a great idea to maybe donate to each of the three senior centers. Um in Wash- Washington, Roxbury, and Bridgewater, because I know that that would be a really great and and a need as well, so.
Okay.
I definitely would. And then just, I I have another question, well, not question, but I was really excited too to see about the the boat course.
Yes.
Certification, and I love that. I think that's really exciting, so I'm kind of excited to see what other trips you have, tricks you have up your sleeve.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're uh creating more adult education opportunities, trying to. That was the first that we were able to kind of get on the books.
It's great.
Um I don't know how their enrollment is now, but like a day after I posted it, we had seventeen signups.
That's great.
So uh it's gonna, it's probably full now.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so a lot of interest, yeah.
Well, I think the program is exciting. Well, I think the program is exciting. Supreme, you are definitely on your way here. This is really good to see. We are just thrilled. We could not be happier.
Right.
Please tell all the kids we're pulling for them 100%. We really, really appreciate what they've done. They're really making this a great program.
Absolutely. I will. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to reports and recognition. I'm going to defer to the superintendent for his report. I'm going to put this away before.
All right, summary report, first by saying happy Purim to all of our Jewish friends and neighbors. Tonight is the Purim holiday. Also, a happy Connecticut School Board of Education Appreciation Month to all of our board members here who donate their time and effort to support all the works of the schools and represent the communities. We have a special treat for you guys, but we're working on that right now. So maybe by the end of the month, we'll have that ready to share with you, so be on the lookout for that. But again, March is Connecticut's Board of Education Appreciation Month. And some big dealings over our elementary schools. All three schools have invention conventions this week, so I'm really excited to see what students come up with. I've been invited to be a judge at all three of these schools. So I'm eager to come out and have the opportunity to have my first adventure convention at all of our schools. At Shapod, I want to share that the school will be hosting a CIAC basketball tournament, second round game for our boys' basketball team on Wednesday, March 8th at 6:30. We'll be playing the winner of tonight's first round game between Aerospace and Classical Mag. We had a bye in the first round, so we had an auto bid for the second. As we should, Peppermint Patty, our belt of Galloway, is due to calf as early as this week. So we're watching that and looking forward to welcoming a new addition to our livestock family. I also wanted to share that on the issue of school safety, I had an opportunity to attend the Connecticut State School Symposium last week that was held at Southern Connecticut State University in Haven. That brought together district leaders and law enforcement officers from across Connecticut. And we had the opportunity to come and learn from experts in school safety, technology, psychology, to help keep our schools safe. For me, it personally reinforced how strong our existing efforts are in keeping our students safe, but it also provides new avenues for us to explore to continue to ensure our emergency preparedness. Tomorrow, I'll be attending another safety conference with a team of district leaders in Wallingford. We will use the Evolve Day incident as a learning tool to examine our own readiness here in the 12th. I also want to share with the community that currently open enrollment season. So if you know people who are looking to tuition into our schools from outside of the district, now is the time to sign up. So please spread the news and encourage them to check us out. We have a lot of big things to offer at your tonight. And with that, I'll include my report, other than mentioning that we have two new hires that I would like to share with the board. We are looking to appoint Andrew Hill as a tutor at Shapod Valley School and Robert Ray, the boys' tennis coach here at Shapod.
We have old business, but rather than go through these items.
I just had a quick question from Mark. That's okay. So I got a thing in my Facebook feed about tickets to the basketball game and it said that you can only go if you pre-purchase online. Is that a safety rule? Is that why? Okay, it just seems like it might deter attendance because you have, you know, and I just was wondering if that, if it was because of safety or.
I couldn't remember this project.
Oh, it's a CIA, okay.
As much as it's just a pre-sales thing, depending on how people sell.
The news is it's easy to do with it, there might be alternatives, but I think.
Okay, and just people ask, so I just was curious. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other, any other questions? Okay, we have some old business items, but they're also action items. So I think we'll probably take them up under action, because we've already been through these various policies. So I'm looking to be a modest amount of discussion. First action item is to consider an appropriate approved field trip request to the Wyndham Column 4H campus in Comfort, Connecticut on March 17th through 23rd for grades seven and eight. Is there a motion to approve that? So move, it's a second. Move to the second. Okay, any discussion, any presentation or anything? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye, and on the screen, oh, look at that.
Oh, it's John, that's.
All those opposed, all those abstaining, I see a unanimous vote of all 12. Okay, so we'll move on to item number two. And this is to consider and adopt policy 4219, reports suspected abuse or neglect of children or reports of sexual assault of students by school employees. Is there a motion to approve this for a second reading? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move to the second, discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, all those abstaining. Is that a, is that a thumbs up or a thumbs down from Jay? I think that was a thumbs up. Okay, good, yeah, all right. It's very hard to see them up there on that screen. Okay, the next item, consider if appropriate, adopt policy 5128. Do we have a motion to adopt 5126, rather, improve completion rates of fast book for a second reading? So move, second. Move to the second. All those in favor, unless there's any discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Or raising your sign. And I see an aye there on. Okay, all those opposed, all those abstaining, it's unanimous. Is there a motion to approve for a second reading and adopt policy 5131.2 physical activity, undirected play and student discipline?
So move, I'll second.
We're moving second, there's a discussion. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. I see a no vote there from Mr. Boniudo. All those abstaining. All right, so I have that at 11, 1, 0. The next item is to adopt, I'll entertain a motion to adopt for a second reading, policy 5141.21, administration of student medications in the schools. Is there a motion? It moved, is there a second? Move to the second, now, discussion. I will tell you that I did have a conversation with council and I did actually go online and find the statute that was enacted that this policy is based on. And the issue that came up is what can we do in a situation in which someone apparently sent in the written notification opting out of the administration of.
Narcan and EpiNep.
And EpiNep, opting out of the administration of these to save the life of a student. And unfortunately, that's right in the statute. They have the opt-out provision by law, so it doesn't really matter what we do. But I don't see how it would make any sense for us not to include that in our policy directly in the statute. I believe that it is a terrible thing, that's, someone might opt out, saving a child's life. But that's what, that's what the law provides. So I think we're going to have to live with it much if I don't like America.
I can't vote for it at all, because that goes against everything that I believe in. I'm a healthcare professional and there's no way that I can ever say that I will stand by and watch somebody die because their mommy and daddy said, oh, I don't want that. I'm not doing that. That, there's that. And then there's also, I took an oath when I became a school board member and it said that I would do the best for the kids and I do not feel that that's in the best interest of any child to have that option. So I will be voting no.
Okay, anyone else have any comments on this? I will reluctantly vote in favor of it, but I think that, I presume the legislature felt they had their choice and that they had to perhaps be a little bit, to get, to get here for the administration of these medications. It must have been something like that. I cannot imagine why they would ever want to provide evidence for someone not to save a child's life. Because it literally saved your life in the administration.
Yes, is it possible on this opt-out form to have different levels of it? So that someone can opt out of aspirin, but not opt out of these lifesaving drugs?
I presume that you can, because what they have to do is they have to affirmatively opt out of the administration of.
But there's got to be a form that they opt out on.
There is, and I believe that if the statute refers.
I would like to make it so that they have to realize what they're opting out of.
What they're opting out of is a parent or guardian of a student may submit a request in writing to school nurse and school medical advisor, if any, that an opioid antagonist shall not be administered to such student under the subdivision. So this is specific opt-out for opioid antagonists. Well, there may be another one somewhere else in the statute. I was looking at this particular issue when I flagged the statute. But I presume that we would, if someone wants to opt out of aspirin, they're not going to opt out of anything else presumably. So it's an opt-out provision. So if you don't opt out, you're in, that's the best. I think that's probably.
Okay, so now you have a child who has passed out on the floor and they've decided that we should give them Narcan, but mommy and daddy said no. So what are we supposed to do then? Do we stand by and watch them die? Or do we call 911 and they can come and give them the Narcan?
Well, I think that's, that's going to be what I think schools are going to be sitting and looking at, trying to figure out how their approach to this should be. So I agree.
I just have a question. I think we talked about this last time, about the enforceability of it. Like how do we, you know, if we offer the opt-out, how do we, in these special circumstances, find out the information before administering or not administering it? Like we have protocol in place that supports the policy.
Well, actually, what the statute starts, the section starts by saying, the school nurse, et cetera, et cetera, may maintain opioid antagonists for the purpose of emergency, personal students experiencing opioid-related drug overdoses, not have a prior written authorization of a parent or guardian. So normally you would get parent or guardian authorizations to administer drugs, but for these, we don't need a prior authorization.
But that, that goes in conflict if we're asking them ahead of time to provide an opt-out. Then it's like, it's like preemptively asked a parent before the scenario happens. That's more like, I just have more of a concern about, you know, how our protocols are going to reflect the policies that are put in place.
I don't know. I think that's going to require some further things, figure out how people get advised with this opt-out provision. At all, but they have affirmative duty to submit an opt-out and we do not need their authorization to administer an opioid.
Just, this is probably a dumb question. Is, is there ever an instance where the district doesn't adopt a policy that's in statute? I mean, not like we have every single policy that's.
Well, you still have to follow the statute even if you don't create a policy. The purpose of creating a policy is to try to understand it, to try to work through it, to try to have something on the books of people and employees in school that are understanding what the law is. But the law still requires that a school nurse can administer an opioid antagonist without a prior written authorization of the parent or guardian. But parents are right to opt out. That's the law. There's not much we can do about that. And we could not adopt the policy.
Doesn't mean that we don't have to adhere to it, so it's kind of neither here nor there. We kind of have to adopt a policy that's there, like you said, reluctantly or not, we've got to understand.
Alex. Why don't we have a policy that if someone opts out, we contact them and say, do you understand what you've done?
I, yeah, I honestly don't know if that works or doesn't, but I think we'll get some further guidance as we go. I don't know if we can do that. I would seriously hope that no one would opt out. It's an absolutely wonderful thing to save someone's life.
But I would also hope that if our nurse does administer this in the heat of the moment, not realizing there's this opt-out form sitting someplace at our school district, when we and she gets sued individually in her capacity, in her capacity individually, we are going to not leave her out there dry and we are going to take care of that.
We, we, well, we provide legal representation, legal acting, spoken verbatim. As far as, you know, as to whether there may be some issues or problems, we'll have to look at that.
So, and I think this was brought up the last time we discussed this, but that the timeframe between when the student child needs the Narcan and we call for EMTs or first responders to come, time is of the essence, right? So even if there is that seven-minute window, it could be shut down within two minutes. So I guess the question is, is that while we have this ridiculous policy, do we have a policy that allows our nurses to override to save the life of the person in front of them the same that first responders do? I mean, it just feels to me that it would, it could really fight us in the same way if we disregard it, even if it is an opt-out option, because you walk away. And then, and then a nurse makes their own, right? They, they, they make a, there's a.
Well, I'm going to pile something else on the stack that's going to make me reconsider. And that is bear in mind that we exercise, our Board of Education, through its administrators' exercises and local authorities, we stand in for the parents because they're not here. And can you imagine having to stand in in this manner? I, I think it's, I really wish they would come up with a different approach.
But don't, but don't our school nurses have that, where they, they're, they're bound to save a child's life? It just, I mean, so for me, even if the, even if the parent chooses to opt out, I would imagine we could have a policy that the school nurse is bound to save a child's life.
I don't think we can create a policy. So it's going to be an.
Yes, they have taken that off, yeah.
Let us hope that no one opts out. That's all we can say. Yes, it is horrific. I agree. It's terrible. It's dumb. It's a dumb policy. I agree.
The same thing for the EpiNep, and if a kid has an allergic reaction, they can opt out of that one too.
Well, yeah.
Either one of them is, just makes no sense.
It's not a good situation and I wish our legislature had taken a different tack or I wish our courts would do something about it. I just don't know how you don't save a child's life. I don't, but that's, you know, that is what it is. Okay, I think we've probably exhausted this topic. Let's take, let's put it to a trial and a vote right now. All those in favor of adopting for a second reading this policy 5141.21, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye. One, two, three, four, five, six. John says yes. I can't tell for Jane. Jane, can you give us a thumbs up or thumbs down? She's saying no. Saying thumbs down. All right, well, there are seven votes in favor. All those opposed. One, two, three, four, four opposed, and Jane is five. Okay, so seven in favor, five opposed. There's no one to abstain. We've had 12 votes, so that's it. If the policy is adopted, fairly. Okay, is there a motion to adopt for second reading policy 5141.25, food allergies, glycogen storage disease, and/or diabetes? Is there a second? Move to the second, discussion? Move to second, discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand, putting up your sign, whatever.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, please say nay or hold up your other side. Jane, are you hand, thumbs up? Jane is voting. Okay, if you see a thumb up, there we go. Okay, so it's, so I believe it's unanimous. It's been adopted. I do believe that that is the agenda. Uh, if there's no objection, we will consider this meeting adjourned at seven forty by consent. Thank you all very much.